With that, I'd like to call the meetings order of the Monday, July 11th, 2008, a regular meeting of this Attorney Court of Appeals.
Part of my target is very vocal.
Nope, you just started. I started it.
Perfect time.
So with Scott's arrival, we'll have one more member, but let's all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where the richest stands, one nation under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we'll take roll call, please.
Allen.
Here.
Butts.
Here.
Emmons.
Here.
Gisond.
Here.
Krug.
Here.
McKelfen.
Here.
And Chair Evans is absent this evening. He did have an unexpected death in the family, so please keep Chair Allen, his family, and your thoughts and prayers. Board members Kirby and Uller had, I believe, some work conflicts this evening, so they were unable to attend.
So with that, we will go ahead and everyone should have a copy of the agenda, and we'll need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seven.
Do we need roll call today?
We can.
My chair skills were a tad rusty, so go ahead.
Sure, yeah, we can, yeah, we can, we can roll call.
Allen.
Yes.
Butts.
Yes.
Emmons.
Yes.
Gisond.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
Chair McKelfen.
Yes. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting on April 9th, 2018. They've included in the packet. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review them. At this point, we either need a motion to approve them, or we need any comments we may have from any of the chairs or the commissioners regarding any changes or corrections.
Some votes. Support.
Roll call both of them, please.
Butts.
Yes.
Emmons.
Yes.
Gisond.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
And McKelfen.
Yes. So next up will be our item for appeal. As you can see here, we don't have a full form tonight. We do have the option of proceeding as we have it because we do have a full form. I don't think there's a need for a false comment because we have enough people here to vote. So I just wanted to let you know that. It will take four votes here to be able to approve your application. Why don't we go ahead and have the application run into the minutes, please?
Application number PBA 04-18. Applicant Mr. Daniel Stagner from 4041 Robina is requesting a dimensional variance to install a pool that would put the lot coverage in excess of what is permitted by ordinance.
So with that, is the commissioner here? So if you could come up and give us your name and address for the record, and also tell us a little bit about why you're requesting a divisional variance for your pool.
My name is Daniel Stagner, and this is my wife, Jacqueline Stagner.
Sure. Oh, thank you for letting us speak tonight. We are at 4041 Robina, and we're requesting a variance to make the pool larger than what is ordinance for, to help with the water management issues that we have on our lot. Our house, we moved in in 2014. It was a build at the time, and when it was built, the basement's too low. It was dug too deep. The ground around, it isn't properly pitched for water management. And we've had numerous issues with water in our basement and just not being able to get it out. And we aren't able to properly grade the lot because of basement being so low in the hole itself.
So just to give you some background on what we'll do, we will go ahead and open it up to any of my fellow board members who may have some questions for you. Any of the rest, do you want to show us something else?
We have just a document that kind of details our concern. You know, to me, to be forthright, we want a pool. We'd like to make it larger based on what we've seen as a comfortable-sized pool for the family usage, our family. We have two children and other nieces and nephews that we'd like to entertain there. So part of our, you know, I could walk through the points if you'd like.
No, that's cool. Please go ahead.
Okay. So as per code, we have full foundation water pipes, I forget what they're called, sorry, drainage system that runs to our sun basin. On the outside, we have that, too. We have pea gravel along the side of the foundation, just, you know, per code. Unfortunately, the house being so deep in that the ground level wasn't allowed to go up higher than it is because of our egress windows and our garage door and patio ground plane. So we don't have the ability to grade away from our house like we'd like to. Based on, we are actually, our next-door neighbor to the north is roughly 14 inches, maybe a little bit more in spots, higher than our ground plane. To our south, Roy is probably about six inches, but he's got much landscaping that kind of manages the water on his side. We have the downspouts in our backyard take all of the water from the more than half of the house and direct it to the backyard. Unfortunately, again, we don't have the swale, we don't have the grade to move it away from the backyard to the front yard. And unfortunately, we have the pea gravel around the foundation, water gets to that, goes straight to our sump pump, and the sump pump can't keep up. So I've scratched out the one-third and one-half, and we're up to three-quarter horsepower sump pump now. So I'm going to skip down to the third to the last bullet point here. Eighteen by thirty-four kept eight inches below the top surface, can store or catch 34, 133 gallons of rain that we can pump out later. And in fact, in the spring, we see pea rain typically, it'll be down lower than that. It won't be opened up yet due to the temperatures. And we can catch water, and we can pump it out when it's not raining. In addition, our water management system, we'd like to incorporate, take water directly from the downspouts and grade it to the front with a pop-up in the front yard. This should not impact our direct neighbors in all three directions, as we're going to be managing our water and any additional water that comes from garage downspouts or other overflow and pea-raining situations. And then the remaining yard, which...
Currently has a playscape for the kids.
We have a playscape on it right now, but it'll be usable, it'll be dry. I do have some pictures on my cell phone if anybody wants to see the bowl shape of the backyard. And again, that's our pitch as an accumulator and a water management system. Our yard is mostly clay, as you guys know, in Berkeley, lots of clay. So we're not absorbing water in the backyard or any uncovered space. It's just a matter of managing the water that just gets in the backyard. So, and again, we don't have any problems on the front side of the house, you know, maybe it's the way the house faces, but the front two downspouts run way away from the house, no problems. And our garage is attached, so our foundation footer is underneath the garage section, so it doesn't see any water. So we have a big problem on the backside of the house, and we'd like to manage it with a water management system, a pool acting as a accumulator.
Okay. If there's something else, I'll open it up to all of you for any comments or questions. Go ahead.
I have three questions, as a matter of fact, just for my own curiosity. As the builder of your house.
Icon?
That's Icon Restoration. It was Greek, what was it? Icon was the restoration portion of their business, and it was Maple...
Maplewood Homes. Okay. The other questions I had for you was, did you, is there a smaller pool than the one that you're proposing offered by the sales outlet? And if so, what size was that?
It's going to be a liner pool, so really those can be built...
To spec, to custom size.
To any size.
Okay.
Did you have one more question?
No, I just, one more statement. Actually, I did drive by your house, and I could see your problem with my bare, with my naked eye. It's, obviously, you're in a bowl between your two neighbors. I just don't understand how that can go on, but it does.
I had a question. I was just curious, and this is more of a policy, I guess, question. The, you're proposing to have a apron around the pool. I'm assuming it's a concrete apron around the pool that you're... I can't tell from your drawing, though, why five feet?
It's a standard size, like four or five feet, I don't recall.
I think standard's three. I think it might be three or four.
Okay.
Hold on, let me see if it's, it might be, I'm drawing in the back here. Maybe I just can't...
It's three on your drawing here, I think.
What is this, four? Really kind of stuck side of the pool?
It's four.
Okay.
On this, on this page.
So I guess I'm just curious, does that, does that concrete count in the square footage? That doesn't, this is literally all back there.
Yeah, the concrete does not count, but it's a, this square footage, the accessory structure.
And our intention is to put most of the water management system underneath the concrete, you know, the drain pipes and pea gravel and other treatment.
Any other questions?
If you, if you do the, if you were to get maybe a smaller pool that would fit within the dimension, would that affect, does the water management system depend on the pool, or does the pool depend on the water management system, or is that two separate items?
They're really two separate items. I think more is better as far as accumulating water. The, the size of pool allowable within the code is 15 by 30, and that, I hesitate to say that our pool builder has already ordered the components, but, and that's not really a concern of yours, and not a concern mine that's on hand. But again, it could be ordered to spec. And no, they're not, they're not tied together, although...
We could go for either one. We want to definitely do both together.
Right. And unfortunately, again, the grass and the ground that we have isn't serving any sort of absorbing purpose.
And the playscape is going to still be there, or...
We're making a assessment, but I'm not sure yet.
I'm worried about kids jumping off the playscape in the pool.
Oh, yeah, no. I, yeah, no, that won't be happening. If anything, we'll be turning it kind of away from the pool.
Okay.
The slide won't be used as part of the pool.
Yeah.
The swings won't be used as part of the pool. Yeah, no, we're, we're safety-conscious as well.
It's a, it's a novel approach as far as, as far as, it's kind of out-of-the-backs thinking as far, as far as flood retention plan to put a pool in.
We're both, we're both engineers and trying to solve problems, and we're not, we're not by any means civil engineers, but...
Right.
Putting our best foot forward.
Is there anyone else who has any questions?
I'm just looking at the size difference. I mean, you could cut it down to 16 by 30, and you'd be like right on the borderline of not needing a variance, the way I'm looking at it. And that's still a pretty good-sized pool.
Are there any other comments? If not, I'm going to go ahead and see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak. Okay, we'll go ahead, and we'll come back if there's any questions. So if you'd like to come up, please, say your name and address for the offer.
Roy Yankee, 4013 Robina, to the south of Dan and Jackie. As you all know, Berkeley has significant water issues, always has. We've been in our house for over 30 years, and quite frankly, there is a creek that runs over the ground through our backyard. So it's always an issue. And I'm, I've been speaking in support of this in terms of anybody being creative in terms of the water management issue. I wish we could do it ourselves, and I would support them in doing this. They've been great neighbors, and I find that they're very safety-conscious with their kids. Our granddaughter lives with us, and they play together, and so there's no issues with that at all. And like you, I think it's creative, and it would be a great opportunity to try out something brand-new. I don't know how many pools we want to city Berkeley, but, you know, it's, it's a great idea, especially in our situation. So I would, I would support that as a neighbor friendly. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, I'll bring it back to us for any other comments.
I'd have to agree with Brian. This is a really novel approach to a very serious problem that we have in this community in a number of areas. And being a former pool owner myself, I know how much maintenance they are, and mine didn't offer me anything back other than enjoyment for my family. This would offer back a little bit of water management, I think, in your lot.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Just so you understand, we are bound by law, and we have five criteria that we have to meet. And those criteria basically is, are there unique or physical conditions of the property that would result in the variance being needed? Is the need for variance not the result of the action of the property owners or previous property owners? District compliance with the ordinance, will it reasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted purpose or render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome? Is the request for the variance, the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the property, to the applicant and other property owners? And finally, will it negatively or adversely impact the surrounding properties? I think one of the biggest challenges we have here is that you have come forth with, once again, as everyone has said, a very creative proposal. You're also spending a significant amount of money to rectify a situation. I don't think anyone is in disagreement with your plan. I think the biggest thing we're struggling with is, we have to make sure that the variance, there's not other ways to do the variance, and that we're not giving you more than what is necessary. And I think that may be where some of us are, the reason why we're asking those questions. So I think one of the real things that I'm questioning is, in order to fix your problem is the additional size of the pool. If we said you have to stick to what those requirements are, does that truly fix your problem? Or do we need to give you a couple more feet in order to make it work? And I don't know that that is the case. So that's kind of where I'm at, and I don't know if that's the feeling from everyone else. So we're often in a very difficult situation because we, you know, we're bound by certain criteria. So I will open it back up to anyone else. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, by law, the board can, can grant the requested variance. They cannot go beyond what is being requested. They can grant a size smaller than that, but they cannot grant...
Right, but I think if they go a little bit smaller, then they truly don't need a variance, correct?
Correct.
So we could, so in a certain, we could deny the variance, and they can still go ahead and build their pool. It's not as if the property variance will be able to build their pool, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I think that's where we're struggling. I mean, that's at least where I'm at.
I did some quick calculations, figured out the size of a 30 by 16 pool. That would make them 57 square feet over the required lot coverage size. It's a reduction in the size of the pool, yet still requires a little bit more. I think if you went smaller than a 30 by 16 pool, it might not be quite as nice, but, you know, it's, like I said, it's still 57, 57 square feet over.
Yeah, it was kind of my feeling also. It's, this size of pool they're asking for isn't really necessary, but yet you want to search the size of pool that's usable, especially when you're spending that kind of money.
Well, and you want the size of pool to be large enough to be able to solve the problem. And I guess that's where, I don't know enough that if we said, okay, go smaller, I would hate to be the one that said we went smaller, and guess what? It doesn't work like we thought it was going to work. And obviously, as we drove by, as I drove by as well, I was like, I just went by the first time, and I was like, I don't even need to real, I mean, I did turn around and came back through, but I was like, I don't even need to turn around, because I can obviously see that there's a major issue.
Same thing. I remember that house being built and driving by and, like, the same thing.
I have a question for the app. Was there any recourse with your builder on doing this? Or am I bringing up a bad sucker?
You can come back up, or you can, if it doesn't, you don't have to come back. I can say everything.
Because I'd be contacting the builder.
Agreed. Didn't say we left on good terms. And with a lack of, I guess he felt some responsibility and did do the upgrade from the one-third to the one-half horsepower sump pump for us. That still fits.
Seven hundred bucks, yeah.
Hey, you know, after the house was built and I had the grading work done by a separate company from our builder, and he's like, you're going to have problems here. I don't know, you know, who to, who to really blame at this point, or even them, you know, was it, you know, the person who dug, you know, the subcontractor that did the digging, and the, the, whatever, you know, the deal with light or whatever you used to set the height of the house and the kind of plan of the house, or the architect?
Sounds like somebody in the stuff.
Lack of continuity.
You'd take that, we've been caught during the inspection phase because it's so visible to the naked eye.
That, that was another question we had, is why we didn't, why weren't we made aware of it? I mean, this is our first house built, and hopefully, our last one. And, you know, we weren't, we weren't suspecting any problems. We, you know, didn't, didn't challenge the Dwayne inspector on anything, you know, he was there to protect us. He did a good job. It's this, this particular detail, I don't really know how to assign blame on it. Where did we go wrong? Was it drawn up incorrectly? Was it built incorrectly or inspected incorrectly? I don't, I don't know how to put that together. Or is it the unique soil, you know, circumstances that we have in Berkeley that just make it exacerbated? It's the same everywhere.
My house is 50 years old, and I get water in it. My backyard is under, I couldn't put a garden in until June.
Yeah, yeah. The gentleman to the north, he also has Lake Berkeley, we call it, right? And has a, has a big pipe that he just recently cleaned out, that's, that's working out pretty good for him. But he doesn't even have a sump pump, that's all. I don't, Roy, do you have a sump pump? So hard to say why we're in this situation, but I guess we've been our best foot forward to do the best we can.
It's all led us back to, when it was engineered, there's an elevation percent that we didn't get it up high enough.
I'd be willing to give you a variance for a smaller pool, but I think 18 by 34 is a little excessive. I mean, you can work with something a little bit smaller than that. Hopefully, you really didn't order materials.
I didn't.
So is that a motion that we have on the floor?
Yeah, it could be a motion. I'll support that. So...
So we have to be, we have to be very clear. If we're making it smaller, then I think we need to be very specific on either the percent of yard that we're, whatever, whatever the size of the pool, percent of the yard, whatever is going to be appropriate size for you as to how would you like to make a better option?
The proposed is 37, and we're at 29. The variance would be 35 percent, first, or maybe on 35 percent.
I think maybe at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, maybe just stating the size of the pool allowed.
Well, the size or the square footage?
I think, I think we have to do the square footage, how much the pool, how much the square footage.
That's what we're talking about.
408.
We're talking about the variance for square footage that...
So basically, they have up to something 455 square feet would take, put them right exactly at their lot coverage, which would...
15 by 30 is my calculation.
15 by 30?
Yes.
But they could have 15 by 30 and not need a variance. That puts them right at their, at their max.
So once again, I want to ask the question. Is there a way to know with any type of certainty how big that that needs to be to effectively manage your water? Now, the pool people share that with you, or if you two as engineers, because I am not an engineer, would know that? I don't know if there's any, like, you can shut on the subject. I don't want us to sit here and say, okay, let's not go with variance, we've not solved your problem, because there's obviously a problem.
What we could do is, we've already got a case on the docket for the July meeting, so if the ZDA was so inclined to postpone action, we could work, it would cost the applicant the engineering costs, but we could have our engineering firm look at the plans to see if that would be adequate range. We've now got provisions by ordinance that this is more so for, for planning, but when somebody wants to build something, if we need outside consultant, we can charge escrow to cover consultant fees. So that's, that's an option if the ZDA was so inclined.
I guess, I look at it, you're spending a significant amount of money for something that's going to be there for a long time, and that you're, you look, these are your children, they're young enough, you want them to enjoy it for many years to come. I just don't want to shortchange this question, and I don't know that any of us are experts in understanding. And I don't know what that is for your timeframe, because then July, you're...
We're, I think we're a little longer anyway.
I think 16 by 30.
So we're shooting at 15 by 30. Would not require a variance at all.
Correct.
They don't need any...
A 16 by 30.
Yep, that puts, about 25, 13. Just over.
So just, just quick calculations. If they said that, that 30...
If they said that thirty... That the pool that they're asking for is, would hold three thousand four hundred and thirty-three gallons of water.
At eight inches. Just that's just eight inches.
And if we divided that by the square footage of the pool, it comes out to about five point six and change gallons per square foot. So then if we take a fifteen by thirty pool and the square footage of that and multiply that by five, six, that brings the amount of water that it can hold down to two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight.
Unfortunately, we don't have a reference point.
Yeah, I'm just doing quick calculations.
You know, my judgment, my wise judgment was more is better as far as being able to trap water, not let it go into the neighbor's yards, not let it go into our basement and be able to pump it off later.
And that's why I'm... That's why I keep, I guess, I keep posing the question and I hope I'm...
I don't have detailed calculations. If there was an objective, you know, outside engineering consultant that we could hire, that you, the board would recommend, I think we're open to that discussion. There's another point that our pool contractors has made. He's uncomfortable bringing his equipment in next to the house for fear of damaging the foundation, which I feel like we can argue back with somebody in engineering analysis as well. So if we can kill two birds with one stone there, that'd be great.
So to try, I want to understand your management system here a little better. You want to build a pool that's basically would be a detention system.
Yep.
And you wouldn't have, you don't have the ability to gravity drain that.
Correct.
So you would have to pump this water out.
Correct.
Would you do that manually or would you have some kind of automated system that would turn the pump on?
The thought is manually. Peak water seasons primarily, I mean, granted, the flood of two thousand fourteen was a unique case, but we see peak water in the springtime. When the pool's open, at that point, we'd keep the pool probably twenty-eight inches or twenty-four inches below the skimmer level. So you'd have, you know, every eight inches is that thirty-six hundred... Or sorry, what was that number?
Thirty-four, thirty-three.
Thirty-four, thirty-three gallons for every eight inches. And the pool's forty-eight and fifty? It would be forty-eight, or sorry, I don't know the...
Big feet at the deep end. Yeah. So challenge.
Big feet at the deep end, yeah. But larger is better as far as I guess. We would consistently keep it eight inches low and that's why I use that calculation. Consistently, it would be eight inches below, but during the off-season, it would be lower than that so we could pump it out and keep it, you know, at a reasonable level.
So I guess I'm just, what I'm getting at is, I don't know that calculations are going to tell us anything because they would have the ability to monitor the level adjusted as they fit. It's a place for the water to go, to hold, to hold it, and then you would keep an eye on it and pump it out when you need to.
But when you're pumping it out, where's that water going to? Is it going through the sewer system or...
It would go into the water management system and pop up in the front yard and drain to the sidewalk driveway out to the street.
Because the pool isn't straight water. It's not just H2O. You've got chlorine and other chemicals in there.
Salinated, so it would be salt.
I have a personal question. If this were the way that we wanted to go, would be a motion for postponement until further engineering studies could be done through the city?
Yes, if the planning, if the ZBA was so inclined, we could have the applicant, if the applicant was willing to do so, set up an account, escrow account, to have HRC, our staff engineers, do a review to see if, you know, if this would be the way to go. Or the other option is if the ZBA is inclined to grant variance, sixteen by thirty pool puts them just over their lot coverage by twenty-five square feet.
Sixteen by thirty is twenty-five?
Yep. So that puts them at about thirty-five point three on their lot coverage.
That's where I'm willing to go, but...
Yeah, I think it's...
Checking with you? Engineering study and more money?
Is the motion then to approve a sixteen by thirty?
Yes. At a maximum of sixteen by thirty.
Well, I think we... I think we need to ask them. I mean, they have two options.
Well, that'd be four hundred or four hundred and eighty square feet.
The engineering costs could be very costly, so I don't know if that's an expense that is going to... Honestly, I don't tie my head, I would be able to, it could be very expensive for an engineering review of this.
Several hundred dollars.
I'm trying to maximize the three hundred dollars.
Yes, HRC is very expensive, but you also get paid for it without...
Thank you.
My recommendation would be to probably not. I think having our engineers do it, the outreach cost would be probably costly.
You still have the option of controlling the depth of the pool in the spring to make up for warm water if that's what you're getting. So I'm willing to make a motion to approve ZBA oh four eighteen with the condition that square footage of the pool about to exceed four hundred and eighty square feet, which would be a sixteen by thirty. There's still... I need to explain it, but...
What's the...
Four eighty square. As opposed to six hundred.
Would it be possible fifteen by thirty-two instead of six? It's still four hundred and eighty.
We're not worried about the dimensions. We're talking about square footage.
Okay, square footage, okay.
Does that get you a... Does that more, does that fit the common size?
It's just a little bit longer for like doing laps and things like that.
You can mention motion and say not to exceed four hundred and eighty.
That's what my motion was. Not to exceed four hundred and eighty square feet.
Are you a dimension?
You can make a bold...
I will support that motion.
Mr. Butts?
So we've got a motion. Can we have a roll call, both, please?
Emmons?
Yes.
Your son?
Yes.
Crude?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Andrew Kelvin?
Yes.
Phil. Let me know how it works out, too. Something Mike can't care.
With that, next up on our agenda is other business. Do we have any other business?
Not at this time unless the board has questions.
I believe you said that we will have something for the July meeting?
Yes, we did get one case on the docket. I've been running very crazy, so I will contact you all with the details and...
Just good to know we have something.
Yes.
That's just perfectly covered. I don't see anyone here for a liaison report. Anyone for public comment? Okay. With that, I will make a motion that at eight oh nine on Monday, June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, the regular meeting of the zoning board of Killes has been adjourned.